Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk take the roll please.
Mayor Rowe.
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
Two, O'Connell.
Here.
Three, Rattamacher.
Here.
Four, Wyland.
Five, O'Malley.
Here.
Six, Cook.
This point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Is there anybody that would like to address the council this evening? Anyone? Once more. Hearing none, let's go to the consent agendas and Nancy will verbalize all of those for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of December 18th, 2006. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $1,148,624.40 for the time period December 18th through January 2nd, 2007. And claims in the amount of $583,649.36 for the time period January 3rd, 2007 through January 15th, 2007. To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period January 16th, 2007 through June 30th, 2008 to Rebecca Helgeson, River Falls, Wisconsin; Elizabeth Weincom, Hudson, Wisconsin; and Megan Dusick, Roberts, Wisconsin. To approve the renewal and issuance of a secondhand jewelry dealer's license to Richard W. Enlow doing business as Enlow Designs, 523 Second Street, Hudson, Wisconsin. To approve the approximate 3% increase in the public works service charge rates for 2007 as submitted. To approve the 2007 park user fee schedule as submitted. To approve the boat mooring policy and fees for 2007 as submitted. To place on file the quarterly reports of the public works and parks director, fire chief, and the community access board minutes of December 5th, 2006, and the public utility commission minutes of January 8th, or sorry, January 9th, 2007. That is all.
What's your pleasure on the consent? A second.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote please.
Morissette.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Wyland.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Rattamacher.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Let's go to Plan Commission certified survey map for two commercial lots south of Crestview Drive and west of Gateway Boulevard, County Market and Home Depot, Leersa of Hudson LLC.
Plan Commission recommends approval of the proposed two lot certified survey map located south of Crestview Drive and west of Gateway Boulevard, County Market and the Home Depot site as proposed by Leersa of Hudson LLC. And there's basically two issues here regarding this proposed subdivision. One was the conformance of off-street parking and I asked detailed maps to be submitted as far as existing and proposed off-street parking so I could assure that the individual lots would conform. And also provision and updating of utility and access easements. We very carefully reviewed the public utility easements on site, also reviewed the need for updated private utility easements, and all those things are now meeting. This subdivision actually also will assist the city of Hudson because the improvements on the individual parcels, the Home Depot facility would be on one parcel, the improvements of County Market and the retail center would be on a separate, and there will not be a mixture and combination of the assessments. Because we get a lot of calls on those facilities asking what the assessments are, then we've got to break them out. So actually this will assist the city in some of our administrative work with the assessments. Again, Plan Commission recommends approval.
Discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Let's go down to Finance Committee. Request for pay adjustment for the interim chief of police. Devin, you've got the particulars on that.
The Finance Committee is recommending a $3.87 per hour increase retroactive back to September 1st, and until such time that a new chief is hired and replaced, they estimated -- we're estimating another eight weeks out. We're not sure how long it'll be for a new chief, but that cost will be approximately $3,900.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Police Department issues retirement and vacancy of a patrol officer position and the...
The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to authorize Acting Chief Larson and myself to begin the process of filling the position so that individual can begin work prior to the time officer Dunn leaves so that that person get on the street by themselves soon.
For approval. Second. I think that is a wise approach because Officer Dunn will be taking his vacation. He will be training this individual, and when the time comes, he'll be hitting the road and running and doing what he's supposed to be doing. And this is all under the existing budget of the police department, so it is an additional -- is not an additional cost as it relates to their budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Police Department staff vacancy and pre-employment, is that the one we're waiting on?
Well, Paul and I will work together and get a cost estimate related to what his proposals were for future staffing needs on the police department. I will bring that back next meeting.
Okay.
Correct? Is that right, Paul? Yeah.
Initial review of the cost estimates for pedestrian crossing on Vine and Diamond. We don't know what the costs are, so we're going to wait and make sure that we get a solid bid and know where the monies are coming from. Is that okay with everyone? Need a motion?
We brought forward removal of the stop sign.
Removal of the stop sign and putting up the crossing flags.
And also reinstallation of a traffic change alert sign.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I guess I'd like to wait until we have our final plan in place before we remove the signs.
I'd agree. I'd rather see us have everything in place before we just take it down.
Well, I'm going to say we've been dealing with this for seven months now. Let's remove the stop sign according to the study because we think we all agree with that, put up the flags, and then when we get -- we can proceed with the expensive part of this as we go along.
I'd like to remind us all that both the study and particularly the Wisconsin Department of Transportation has clearly indicated to us that putting that sign there where there has not been a significant number of accidents is actually an invitation to create more accidents than we've had before. It is considered a dangerous thing by the Department of Transportation, not a helpful thing. That's why...
Even the second study said that.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, we have a motion. Not a second, we're in discussion.
Right. So, this is coming forward the Finance Committee because we also had something coming forward from safety. The concern I have is that if we don't have some sort of speed -- our biggest problem across that intersection is speed. So, we talked about, does anybody know from our last meeting where we stand with a sign from 3M that was supposed to be offered to us for a period of time to put on the hill to show what speed people are driving?
Well, if it's available, they didn't know what to do with it because quite frankly, there was a lot of confusion in that particular area. Sergeant Marty, I talked about that about a month ago. We can get an update from that salesman, can't we, Marty?
He called about a week ago in regards to that. He was under the impression that we were going to hardwire this sign into place. Well, I told him, we've got no place to hardwire it. It would have to run off a battery, and he said he was have to check with his support and tech staff to see if they could bring that, you know, get that fixed that way. And as of yet, I've not heard back from him.
How long ago was that?
About a week, week and a half ago.
Would it be possible to, if this is approved, to put the speedometer that we have, you know, on the trailer one at least there to...
I was going to say, I don't want to see this removed unless we have some speed recognition sign there. If we say the trailer's there or this other was in place, something -- because our biggest problem across there is speed, and if we just get people driving the right speed...
Certainly isn't people crossing that way.
Yeah.
It'll also -- by people driving the right speed, getting in and out of the Y, getting in and out of Diamond is much simpler.
Dennis, would you be amenable to, you know, adjusting your motion?
Yeah. To amend it that we put our speedometer there until...
Sure. I'll amend my second.
And then when we receive, if we receive one or we purchase one...
Well, Marty and I will get on the 3M guy and see if we can get that moving.
Devin, are you clear on the motion now? Nancy?
I got it.
Clarify that though.
Be removal of the stop signs, implement those traffic change ahead signal that they had up before when we put the stop signs up so people are aware of it. Go ahead, the flags, get those purchased, get those out there. Put the turn lanes back to the way they were until a final decision is made, and then with the implementation of what they just amended now.
And the...
Speedometer sign remain there until such time that something permanent is done.
Everybody understand?
So, the reason why you want to take the signs out is because, Scott, you say it's too dangerous of an intersection.
I don't say that. The Department of Transportation says that, and it's said that to us several times, and both of our studies have said that. If you have so few accidents that you have one and ever since it's been there, you're inviting more accidents. You're going to create more accidents by putting a stop sign in an area or an intersection where there has not been at least five accidents per year, and there have not been at that intersection. And so, the Department of Transportation, which has years and years of data on this, says you're going to create more accidents than you're going to solve. So, I'm only going with what the Department of Transportation and our own paid engineers tell us. Don't have a stop sign there.
Are we ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's -- raise your hand so I can... May? I'm going to break that vote, and I'm going with the motion.
That's a yes.
Okay. So, the motion's carried with my intervention.
Now, this does not prevent the work that we're already doing in safety to increase the -- correct? Doesn't replace the work we're already working on?
No.
Okay.
No.
We're taking this action because...
Well, you're going to find the money.
It's a temporary solution to our temporary solution.
Well, we're coming up with something temporary because we have not received the data we asked for on how much it's going to cost to do it the other way.
Okay, let's go to nine. Tiff district issues and possible considerations. Any who want to give us a little summary?
The reason this issue is being brought forward, at the Plan Commission meeting last Thursday night, one of the implementation tools that the Plan Commission's looking at is for downtown improvements is to provide incentives, and one way of providing incentives is through a program, the tax increment financing program that's available to municipalities. This is not to say that we would implement that, but we're giving it consideration to potentially use it as one or more financial packages that could be used in downtown. What I would like to do is set up a meeting, public information meeting, for the common council, Plan Commission, staff, developers, that would re-educate those bodies in regards to tax incremental financing. Again, this doesn't mean we're obligated to use tax incremental financing, it's just that we're re-educating ourselves to be able to give it proper consideration. Due to the moratorium, we want to try to move things as head as reasonably quickly as possible, so I'd like to have an opportunity to work with Sean Lantz and Mayors Associates, Betty Caruso, Jack, myself, Devin, and Kathy to move this ahead. Again, it doesn't commit the city to necessarily use it. Other things we have to investigate is determination, the current tax increment district that's up on the hill, where it can be partially or totally dissolved in 2007. So, a number of these questions need to be answered, but having a workshop educating those bodies so we can move ahead with this as a potential implementation tool is what I'm recommending.
Danny, does that have any impact on the timeframe of the moratorium?
At this point, no. You know, if we need to extend the moratorium, you know, I certainly would recommend it, but at this time, no, I think it's premature to make that recommendation or even consider extension of the moratorium. But the sooner we can get moving on this taxing rent financing consideration, other implementation tools for incentives, hopefully we can get some of those questions out of the way.
Okay. Thanks. We didn't start with that particular intent, but as we've moved forward and started to establish things, if we're going to insist on some of the developers to do certain things, then maybe we have to compensate. I'm not saying we have to, but let's take a look at that opportunity, pros and cons, so we can make a good and decisive decision after we get all that information together, and everybody will be part of that.
Alderman, O'Malley asked the question, is this a carrot and stick approach? Yes, it is. Some of our guidelines and standards, regulations, may not apply to the potential use of taxing real financing. We may have other guidelines that we would be considerably improving our project, and that's where taxing real financing may come in as an incentive tool. So, we just want to explore those opportunities.
So, Danny, what you're asking for tonight is permission to set up a seminar?
Go ahead. Correct. Thank you.
I'll also move.
Okay. Third second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Let's go down to public safety. Paul, you want to handle that, consider allowing the dumpster for San Pedro Restaurant be placed on city property?
Yes, San Pedro Restaurant right over, right off the window here. They have a couple of dumpsters, and they are on a month-to-month lease which apparently is being terminated in the near future and need somewhere to place their dumpsters. And just on the other side of the property, right in the Williams Hall, or not Williams Hall, Williams Lot, there's a space there that's essentially the width of a parking space, a little bit more, that's striped off.
Yellow stripe.
Yellow stripes. It's where nobody can park, and that's for some visibility issues. But we believe that we could place the dumpsters there, at least on a trial basis, to see how that impacts that area there. There's still plenty of room to move with your vehicle, pass a dumpster, look to the left to make sure there's no...
Is not any visual impairment?
I don't believe there is, and...
Agreed, Sergeant?
Yeah. I don't believe there is.
I think the police department believes otherwise, which should at least be discussed.
Oh, he was saying...
I wasn't agreeing with him, no. Since they put the dumpsters in that location, you have to creep out into that alleyway just to see around those vehicles. So, it is -- it's made it worse to get out of that alley onto, into those public safety parking lot. Now, I have talked to Catherine today, and I've talked to the fire chief, I've talked to Dave Krupich. One of the proposals that we were thinking about doing was allowing them to put their dumpsters in the fire hall parking lot up against the building. Now, that would be on, would be up to the council, obviously, but it would be something that would be on a lease agreement with them. Obviously, they have no room whatsoever to put those dumpsters. They've got no place to put them at all.
But are you opening the door for all of those restaurants being able to do the same thing?
Well, the other restaurants all have dumpsters where they can get to them that are, they're fine. They don't have, don't seem to have an issue with it. Obviously, San Pedro's doesn't have a back lot where they can put their dumpsters.
But I thought there was a car parked there at San Pedro's.
No, that's not...
Or is that the one to the south?
That's the one to the south. Their building comes right up to the architectural firm, I believe, that's right here on the corner. So, they have no property whatsoever to put a dumpster on.
It's up to the council, whatever it is.
Can I ask a question of, Sergeant Johnson? Marty, I was there a weekend before this last weekend looking at that situation, and it seemed to me that there was a visual impairment where they had the dumpsters at that time. But if they were able to move them onto the striping, as has been suggested by Paul, that...
What it's done is it still made it, it still makes it very difficult to see around.
Okay. That's my question to you, is did you look at it after there was...
I have gone up and I've driven up into that, trying to go out to public safety to see how far I had to creep up before I could see if there was any vehicle that was coming, going southbound through that public safety lot. And you have to creep out into the street almost to be seen. So, it is, it is a safety hazard.
Adam Council, what do you think of that other?
The public safety, I think you have to look at what's going to be, I mean, if it is going to set a precedent or if there's going to be other requests that you'll have to or not want to deal with. The other issues are liability issues which can be dealt with in terms of a lease agreement. You'd want an indemnification and a hold harmless for any claims arising out of the dumpsters being there, but it's a policy issue, I guess, for you to decide whether you think that's going to become a request, you know, something that you're going to have to consider more than the city wants to.
We did have this for like a 60-day trial period because we do want to look at the dumpster issue in the alleyways. We didn't, if the fire hall is, or the wall against the fire hall is a better location and for that 60 days, I think that'd be fine. I know San Pedro, those gentlemen said that would be okay too. We just thought, oh, that this would be a better location, but if there is some traffic issues and we need to look at that. I drive a truck, I guess for me it wasn't an issue, but if you're in a car, maybe that's something a little bit different, so...
The other thing, I mean, are you looking at compensation? I mean, has anything like that been discussed? Rent?
Well, we do have other dumpsters in the alleys on public property.
But there was an exchange of properties to allow that over on this side. They allowed us to put in the parking meters there if they could put the dumpsters along the wall. So, there was a contract when we, when they made all of those different improvements down there.
Our ordinance does say that we can do this. We can't allow dumpsters on...
What the ordinance says, yeah, it does provide, you know, reflectors, this and that. It also sets up a permit system, $25 a week for putting a dumpster on any public property. I talked with both Marty and Deb Andrews in Public Works. Apparently, that has been applied mostly in situations where, like in a residential area, someone's getting a dumpster, they want to put it in front of their house or something. It's only going to be there a week. I don't, it hasn't been, and maybe this situation hasn't come up where someone's asking to use public property on an extended basis, but it's different than those temporary type situations, but I think you may want to consider some kind of compensation.
How about the fire chief? What do you think of dumpsters that are along the wall of our properties from a fire hazard situation?
I don't really like it, but I understand the situation that those people are up against, and, you know, it would be too low cost for it.
Well, I think if we're going to do anything, we ought to try it for 30 or 60 days and work out the particulars.
Why can't he keep it where it is?
They're losing his lease to keep the dumpsters on this property right now.
What happens is the building, the property owner keeps changing. So, now he has to renegotiate every new, like every year almost with a new leassee, and it's getting harder and harder to maintain keeping those dumpsters there.
Property owner's the one on there, and so they're like, well, what can we do?
Why don't we try it for 30 days without charging them anything? See how it all works out.
Our recommendation actually was 60 days.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we, yeah, that we allow them to place their dumpsters against the public safety building wall for 60 days from tonight.
While we work out the...
Yes, at no charge. While we work out a more permanent solution.
But I think we do want a written lease with a written indemnification and hold harmless agreement, just for the 60 days.
60 days for signing such a lease, then I'll amend the motion.
Did we get a second?
Second.
Okay.
And, oh, the other thing is to name the city as an additional insured on their insurance, but we, that also...
That'd be part of the guarantee.
To work out those details. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Michael Keefe is not here yet, is he? Let's skip that one for a minute. Consider removal of the second speed limit sign on eastbound Vine Street near Hickory Road. You got that one?
Yes, I do. This comes from our recommendations from the Vine Street corridor study to remove the 25 mile an hour speed limit signs by the school for the eastbound traffic. The situation right now is we have a school speed limit sign, you know, when children are pleasant, present at 15 miles an hour, then we have two successive 25 mile an hour speed limits and signs, and that's confusing in the eyes of the report, so... The motion or the recommendation is to remove the one by Hickory Road because there was some discussion at the time of the public safety meeting as to whether there was one or two speed limit, 25 mile an hour speed limit signs. There's actually two. There's one on top of the hill, and there's one on, by Hickory Road. And I guess I'd like to move that we remove both of those 25 mile an hour speed limit signs.
Second. Discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it.
Move both then, right? You said Paul. Move both.
Unfinished business, cost estimate for Diamond Drive Vine Street. We kind of talked about that, and we're going to get some definite costs on that. New business, review the update of the policy regarding the hanging banners.
Catherine and I spoke about that today, and I also spoke with some community members. I believe that, my opinion is that this could be solved rather easily, but Catherine sees deeper into it than I do, and she has given me a very clear opinion that we should not have any hanging banners downtown over the Wisconsin State Highway through Fair at all. That having a banner of any nature puts us in the very uncomfortable and possibly litigious position of determining what kind of free speech we're going to allow and what we're not going to allow. And that's an untenable position for the city to be in. We could get sued and we would lose.
We almost did, and we did the school banner up.
So, we're talking about something that we've been a place for nonprofit organizations to do, you know, the hot air affair, the, you know, the different things that we've allowed. Now, we're talking about...
Can I explain?
Yeah, please, please, please.
The banner policy, as you know, became an issue during the referendum election. Created the very pressing need to look at the policy and see how it works both within constitutional law and just the state regulations and the city regulations. And I'd just like to give you at least what I've learned about the banner policy, how it's worked in the city in practice, and then just some of the problems that I see with it. It looks to me like it's been in place since about 1995. It was not adopted as an ordinance, it's a policy, and it seems to have been implemented separate from the sign ordinance, which makes some sense because it's the city providing this wire across the highway for nonprofit organizations. The sign ordinance is more a regulation of signs on, that private people put up in various places around the city. Anyway, the two have never been looked at together, and that's just the way it's been. So, in practice, what's happened, I asked Deb to ask, to look at the last couple of years, what types of organizations use it. What the policy says is just Hudson-based nonprofit organizations. That's all it says. As it turns out, there's St. Croix Valley Builders, which apparently is some kind of, I'm assuming, a builders association that's based out of New Richmond. There's the Kids Fair in, put on by Chiropractor, I think in North Hudson. Questionable whether they're nonprofit or not. It's just, I'm not making a value judgment, I'm just telling you how the policy has worked in practice. Salvation Army is a New Richmond-based nonprofit organization. So, it's kind of been pretty loose in terms of application of the policy.
But it's focused on public good or things that were...
Well, what the policy says, and that's what we have to look at, is nonprofit organizations. So, when the, and I don't really want to get into all the issues regarding the whole referendum issue, but nonprofit is just what it says, nonprofit. So, even if you were to apply the policy as it's written, if someone's a nonprofit, they're entitled to put up a banner if there's space. The problem the city gets into is it cannot have any kind of content-based restrictions or viewpoint-based restrictions or control over those types of banners. So, one thought when this whole issue came to light and was being discussed, well, okay, it's not for, it really wasn't designed for political purposes, and that creates just logistic problems because of, you know, access. But if you put in even nonprofit tax-exempt organizations, you're going to run into situations where there's going to be nonprofit tax-exempt organizations that will be entitled to use that... that will be entitled to use that space. Basically, what you're offering is quite inexpensive advertising space for nonprofit tax-exempt organizations that could be not something that the community would necessarily support, but government cannot be in the position of controlling content. So even if you say, well, we just want community events, defining community events involves some kind of value judgment and content-based restriction. So I guess I just want you to be aware. It's not, it's not necessarily my opinion that the city has no business doing that. I think it is full of constitutional problems. And when you get an application from, and I tried to think of a, some organization that I wouldn't offend anyone, but Voodoo Society of America. I don't even know if such a thing exists. That is going to be across your downtown area if they, you know, pay the fee and if there's space available. So that's the issues you need to look at in terms of the constitutional issues, that it's very difficult, once you provide what could be considered a public forum, especially since it's over a street, which is traditionally a public forum, regulation of what goes on those banners is very difficult. There's side issues in this permit from the DOT. I found we have no record of any permit ever being issued. I can't determine for sure whether one's required because there's no structure actually in the right of way. Those are side issues that, you know, maybe they would resolve the problem, maybe they wouldn't. The other side issue, well, I just think of Hudson-based, even that is difficult when you come, it's kind of a, you know, there's many organizations that draw from the surrounding area. So how are you going to define Hudson-based? Do they have to have an office in Hudson? You know, those kinds of things. But it's primarily the difficulty when you get into content and defining who can put a banner up and who can't.
But isn't the issue here that this was a political banner? It was not a, you know, something for like, you know, rally kids or, or, or something where, you know, even though it's a chiropractic organization putting it on, it was a kids event. I mean, I see the differentiation there. But this was specifically a one-sided political issue where there aren't two banners. There are, is only one. So now you have to make a choice, who gets it? So by saying, you know, we've got a vote banner, put up the vote banner if you want to vote, but not allowing political decision types of issues.
I would be very wary of saying no political ban, I mean, just something like that, just because that's a content-based restriction, and political speech is highly protected in this country. Tax-exempt should hopefully get rid of any organization. That's content-neutral.
Yeah.
And it should eliminate organizations that have a particular purpose of advocating one political side or another. But it's at least content-neutral. But what I'm trying, I'm trying to get you to look beyond just the issue that brought this issue to light, but look at what you're doing in setting up basically a, an area over a city street and state highway where any nonprofit or, and if you put in tax-exempt to try to restrict political, can come in and advertise. And what you may be faced with, I mean, this time it was a political situation we can deal with, but you may be faced with situations that you cannot and should not deal with. And do you want that? I mean, that's something for you to decide, but.
Do, do any of our sister cities like Richmond, River Falls have similar policies or anything like that?
River Falls has a banner. They don't have a policy, and they, I mean, I talked with them. Well, maybe we should get one, and, you know, it's never come up. I mean, it's something, you know, it's, it's worked all right because everyone's kind of, maybe it's only been certain organizations that have been asked to use it, but it is a danger, and you can't rely on the fact that other organizations that you may not feel comfortable with promoting will apply to use it, just like this organization did.
Well, not only that, but differentiation of what you said by one of the staff, like hypothetically, Debbie says, well, are you nonprofit? Yeah, we're nonprofit. Sign goes up. And I think there's much more than that, because that's how we got into that.
Right.
School situation. So if we're gonna have a policy, it has to be decipherable by the average person, and I don't want to have a council meeting for every banner that we're talking about putting up. I mean, maybe the council does, but it seems like we're putting in a lot of extra work.
Let me comment. I, I think this, I think we've come to a terrible pass on this, and I find it, it's very dismain that something that has worked so well for the community for so many years is now finds itself in a, in a time when there are so, there are single-issue groups who want to stretch it till it breaks. Well, now it's broken, and it, and it's not going to work anymore. And the one thing that Catherine says that I think, I mean, everything Catherine says makes sense. I just don't like to hear it.
It is, it's unfortunate.
I'm just sorry to hear you make so much sense on this issue, because I'd rather have, be the way it was for so many years when this community was able to help out our nonprofit, you know, the high school plays, the, the, you know, you know what they all are. The hot air fair would be the one immediately to mind.
Tour homes.
Exactly. What bothers me is that, yes, we would be, if some, let's say the society to burn people at the stake wanted to put up a sign, we'd have to put it up. And people driving through Hudson who maybe don't know Hudson would say, holy cow, I'm never coming to this town again, because it would seem like we were saying that, because we are giving permission for that to be set. And that's what is the point that I think just really breaks it all. I mean, it's, we're not going to be able to allow any banners.
Couldn't we devise a list of approved nonprofit organizations that could go on?
They plan to come to the council to apply for it, that we put them on there, and we, and/or we restrict the, the events to, uh, community festivals, golf tournaments, you know, make it very specific of what, what can be, what can be.
Well, how are you going to define community events?
Make it very specific.
Well, right now, there's St. Pat's Craft Fair that's advertised. There's that Kids' Fair that's advertised. There's something for Trinity School. Are those?
Meat sales.
Those, if you include those as community events, then what's to say some different type of organization that's sponsoring some kind of even an informational whatever? I'll just use this voodoo society, because I, I don't think it exists, and I'm hoping not to offend anybody.
Well, I don't think the, the, the state people exist either, you know.
The, the point is, as soon as you start saying it's only approved organizations that, that promote the type of festivals the city wants to promote, you are controlling speech. You are saying, these are the community, these are the festivals we approve of and that we like, and this is what we're going to allow to advertise, and that's a constitutional problem.
As a landlord of that, if you will, of that area, don't we have the right to do that?
Uh, no.
Understand where.
Nope. You've created, you're providing a public service, and your government, it's just like you cannot, in the community building, you can't, you, if you have space to rent, you cannot make content or value judgment-type restrictions on who can rent your space. That's a constitutional control of expression or assembly.
I have a suggestion. Why don't we hold this over and let's all think about it? If we have a particular approach by the, the particular alterman or, or committee or whatever, let's take a look at it from that approach.
Well, it doesn't really sound like there is a alternative.
Well, you had one.
I know, but we kind of talked about that before, and doesn't, you know, you don't think that's an idea that would work.
I think you'd be in real constitutional danger if you did that.
The ones that are required requirements, what do you get to?
Well, we've basically, the city has suspended the policy while we've looked, we're looking at this issue, because while that organization voluntarily chose to take it signed down, we don't want, I didn't feel it was appropriate for the city to be in a position of having to make the same, you know, running into the same problem.
There was another consideration, all of our Christmas decorations were up, which would have really blocked the, the decorations by putting that banner across there, and I didn't think it was appropriate. And I thought, because of the discussion you and I had and what you're bringing up tonight, that we better have a defined policy that somebody can interpret as we move along, if we're gonna move along, so.
Well, even something as simple as Hudson-based. I mean, it's clear, the way the policy's been implemented, that.
Well, then, is it Hudson-based or Hudson-area-based?
Right, exactly.
You know.
Well, I think I heard that Hudson-based, you're still running the same problem. It could be.
Oh, sure, right.
I just think it's very sad that we, I think it's got to come to this situation, because those banners were helpful.
And they're very helpful. You come through town, you.
You're making a good argument as far as.
Is there a different, well, you run into the same problem, no matter what you, where you'd put it on city property, right?
Yeah, because the city's controlling access to that property or access to that service.
So, but the only issue in the last however many years we've ever had it up is, is this one issue, which is, was a heated political issue. If we say it's non-political, period, okay? You want a vote banner, we put a vote banner up. The other, the other stuff is kind of, yes, something like that might happen, but we haven't seen it. We've never seen the issue where we've had the Voodoo Society of America want to put a banner across Main Street because they have a new, a new place in town. Are we overreacting to this? And if we say non-political, what's the ramification and what, that somebody would come in and what buttons could they push?
Well, first of all, you'd have to define non-political.
It's two sides. If it's two sides, it's political.
Oh, wow, that's everybody.
That is a content-based restriction. I mean, if you were to do that.
If it's a vote, it's political. And that's what I'm talking about. If it's a vote.
Paid for by.
Yeah.
Well, may I ask this question?
Take line on it.
Let's stop focusing, if we can, for just a second on the content, and rather on the ownership. Could we write a policy that says, for instance, banners may be placed at this location over this state highway, but only for those events sponsored by the city of Hudson itself or the city's Chamber of Commerce? And then that's it. No other or, no, you're not talking about the content. You're talking about the organizations allowed to use city property.
Well, but don't you have a discrimination there, too?
Well, can me hear from, I'm sorry, but may I hear from Catherine, because she's looking like she might say yes.
You don't like what she says.
But she looks like she might say yes here for a second.
I'd have to look further into, I mean, because I'm not sure what the chamber.
Well, they're not doing the burn of the stake thing, so, you know.
No, but.
City-sponsored events or?
City-sponsored events or Chamber of Commerce.
What events are city-sponsored?
Well, let's see.
Or Chamber.
Chambers, Chambers sponsors Lakefront Park, Arts in the Park.
Let's do city first.
Okay.
Vote.
Uh, vote.
Yeah.
Elections are city-sponsored. Vote today.
Well, any, any event that's selling their parks.
Okay.
That's not necessarily city-sponsored. In fact, I don't know.
City-approved event, maybe, or?
I'm just trying to get the focus off of content.
Yes.
We approve something in the park. They could still, we might not agree with it, but meet all the requirements.
I think it needs more study, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, that was the reason, actually, for bringing it forward, is do you want to study it further, or do you want to just say, you know, we don't, it's just not worth the.
Why don't you come back and give us the art of the possible?
Yeah.
Yeah, give us some.
If it's possible, I would just do something. If it's not possible, then.
And try and make it so Scott likes it.
Thank you.
But we did get some, or I got some email asking, you know, is there any way we can grandfather in, like the hot air fair, it's coming up. They would like to have a banner up. Is there anything we can do with, for them or not?
Well, you're putting yourself on exactly what you said is the problem.
We're in a situation where we're looking at the policy. I don't think we can, it's a, the city can pick and choose while it's looking at it, because that's exactly what the city's not supposed to be doing.
Let's authorize Catherine to investigate it further and come back to us with a range of possible solutions, or if there in fact is no solution, then that is the answer.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Second motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Uh, let's go to B. Request permission from state elections board to use paper ballots at the February twentieth primary election. Resolution number one dash oh seven. We need a suspension of the rules if you're going to.
Move to suspend the rules.
Clear second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Somebody want to?
We adopt resolution number one dash oh seven. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Let's go to C. Consider amending chapter ninety-nine point six of the municipal code regarding feeding wild animals. Ordinance number one dash oh seven.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Clear second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We have an A here.
Raise your hands.
For, for yes?
In favor?
In favor of suspending the rules?
Yes.
You need four.
Need four.
Well, I guess our bird feeders stay illegal a while longer.
Everybody understand what we were trying to accomplish here?
We need to be able to discuss it, right?
The way the ordinance.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's have one at a time.
Okay, let me explain.
You're the one that brought this up. You have the floor.
This is my, this is on my initiative, and it's simply to do a little housekeeping so that people learn or people continue to respect the ordinances that we have and don't consider them to be off-base. The ordinance as it is currently written prevents anybody from feeding anything, including the bird feeder you have in your backyard, makes you illegal and in violation. So what we, I decided, I worked with Devon on the wording. We're talking about ducks, geese, and gulls. Those are the birds in the park that we don't want to have fed because they leave deposits. Deer or any other four-legged wild animal. That would include coyotes, which we also have in the region. But it specifically omits bird feeders, which everybody's got.
How was the old one written?
That any, if you fed any wild animal.
The underline is new.
Yeah.
You're just taking out the word other, right?
And adding gulls, any and four-legged.
And if the underline is. We added four-leggeds because the birds have only got two, so.
Actually, the way the ordinance was written, it was illegal to feed the birds.
Your bird feeder was illegal in your backyard.
Illegal.
Everybody was in violation. So there's, how can you respect an ordinance like that? So I'm trying to bring some respect to this ordinance by making it sensible. Yes, we don't want you feeding, you know, the deer or any coyotes or geese or gulls or any, you know.
Now that we understand the intent, can we start over?
My also, my code book says that this chapter or this section says that no exotics, wild animals or reptiles should be abandoned or released within the city limits. That's all it says. It doesn't say anything about feeding.
That's because this was adopted earlier in two thousand and six, and you haven't gotten your update for two thousand and six yet.
That would explain that.
The other, just one of.
I only talked about something earlier, but I couldn't find the.
It was early last, in two thousand and six, and we haven't gotten the two thousand and six updates yet.
The other option, and the only reason for doing this would be if there's some other nuisance birds that happen to come along. The other option would just be to exempt, you know, home bird feeders.
Well, the deer.
I mean, either one.
Bird feeder anyway.
If I'm, if I'm allowed to, I will move again to suspend the rules so that we pass this.
Um.
Can I?
I.
Well, a different person can make it, can't he?
Well, I think that.
I think because they did not understand the intent of this particular resolution, wouldn't it be allowed?
I think it's, if you guys vote to do that, I think it's valid.
Well, let's see what happens.
I'll renew the motion.
If you still don't think it's viable, the vote will come up. Somebody else want to make that suspension motion?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
I will second.
Clear second.
I'll second.
You got the second. Any discussion?
We already had it.
I know that. All in favor?
Aye.
Better do.
You want to hand your hands?
We need four.
We got four.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to.
Motion's carried.
Move to adopt ordinance number one dash oh seven as amended, and we've already discussed that.
Can I add more discussion?
Did we get a second?
We got a second.
All right, no, go ahead.
Um, what, this is kind of, seems trivial, but what about squirrels? I'm thinking about, they're four-legged animals, and I'm just thinking, my daughters were at a class and they made squirrel feeders. And now no one, you know, they sell squirrel feeders at. And now no one, you know, they sell squirrel feeders at Fleet Farm, at the bird stores. So now we can't feed squirrels anymore?
I'm amazed, frankly, I'm caught flat-footed on this, I can't imagine anybody deliberately getting squirrel feeders.
Well, I'm just thinking, they, you know, the whole class made squirrel feeders, it's a possibility, we have one up in our yard, I guess it's illegal right now technically.
Well, you know what, leave your bird feeder out long enough, the squirrels will get it, so...
I know, but what about squirrels?
Four-legged animals over two and a half pounds?
Jeez.
Some of the squirrels in this town are big.
And they told me city council life would be exciting.
Denny's got a solution.
I have a solution, but there is a problem. There are curveballs, there is a private individual feeds the trumpeter swans in the city of Hudson and it is a very valuable resource.
Yes. That's right.
And that's why this does not, specifically does not say trumpeter swans. They are exempt from this ordinance. That's why it says geese and gulls and ducks.
But we are on TV and the squirrel question will come up. Might as well handle it right now.
I guess the enforcement of that, I think we'd pretty, I mean, this just seems really trivial to me.
Well, our acting police chief is here and he may have a position, I don't know.
I'm just saying, we, I mean, it's kind of the, you passing laws that we're not gonna follow, so now we're saying, well, it's our ordinance, but we know that part.
Well, yeah, that's a point.
You know?
What do you want to do, can we somehow include that or...
Well, here's, let's be direct, if we may, Catherine.
Just exempt squirrels and bird feeders.
Exactly. No feeding of any wild animals except for by bird feeder or squirrel feeder or trumpeter swans, which are a special kind of bird feeder, which is a high thing.
Can anybody think of what we have not included or included in this?
Somebody's going to.
Because somebody's going to. I'll have an email tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Anybody in the audience think of anything else?
If you wanted, actually, you have first reads and...
That's a good idea.
What a great idea.
What a great idea, let's do that.
And we'll have first reading what I just said and then Devin and I will work on the exact verbiage, is that okay?
Third second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Jeez, all in favor?
I have a motion, wait, didn't you make a motion to approve? No, or not?
I did make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I think that should...
I'll rescind that motion.
Well, let's rescind that. It's okay with the seconder?
Yes.
No, we're open for a new motion.
I move that we have first reading on ordinance number 1-07 as amended and Devin and I and Catherine will come back with changed verbiage.
And take every email into consideration for something...
Oh, I could just see Randy's, I can just see Randy's headline now.
Squirrels are banned.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motions carried. Where are we here? We gotta go back to the first page. Mike O'Keefe was voiced to be, is supposed to be here to give us an update on the sexual offender residency restrictions. I don't see him. Has there been any communication with the chief?
I have, I have talked to Ed, Sergeant Rankin, and he was going to try to hear and I, he's really sick, he just couldn't make it. He didn't really...
You want to...
...land on anything in what we talked about at Public Safety Committee.
Well, you want to hold this over until they're available? Is that okay with you?
I think we should.
Okay. Let's do that. Let's go to the back page again, we're down to communication recommendations of the mayor. I, I won't prolong this, I'm sorry. But I did make a visit up to the 9/11 building, walked in, I discussed this with Scott, who's on the library board, and the main floor is the lobby for, all three floors as far as I'm concerned. You go up to the second floor, the lobby's nice and clean, very attractive, same thing in the basement. But as it related to the first floor, which accommodates the library on both sides, there seemed to be a lot of posters that were dog-eared, that were on the walls, not really complimentary to good cleanliness and appearance. So I asked them if they couldn't remove some of these. There was a full-length calendar across the, the library board's office, I didn't think that was really too appropriate. And so I asked her if we couldn't, the banners and, and posters that she wanted up there, if we couldn't frame them to make them a little more aesthetically pleasing, is I think what I said. Okay. Anyway, I, in case you get a call on that particular approach, it was merely to kind of make that a little more appealing as you enter that building. So they complied and so in case you get some calls, you can blame me and I did bounce that off Scott, who's our representative for the library. So in case you get that, that's what happened. Any comments?
I'm happy to communicate that to the library board.
Okay. That's all I had.
Jack, did you want to mention the meeting Thursday nights? Is there a...
Oh, yes.
Open house?
And he's left, there's an open house meeting regarding the four blocks and the moratorium and the approaches we're taking collectively with the developers and that's at 18, on the 18th, Denny, at 4:00?
4:30 to 7:30.
7:30, open to everyone.
It's at the Marina Clubhouse and if, there are a lot of people don't normally go to the Marina, but just go to First Street, turn left and go as far south as you can until you run into a gate and that's it.
Thank you for reminding me that. Any alterperson? You had one earlier.
No, it's fine.
How about the charges you were going to talk about?
Oh, yeah, I would like to ask, this summer I had a couple of town meetings up in Prospect Park and I was looking over the charges on, you know, to use the facilities up there. And one of the things I had talked about with the parks is that if I as an alderman want to use it for a town meeting, what do I need to pay? And we, we worked something out, but I'd like to throw that as a thought to the park board that to encourage each of the aldermen to use our, use certain facilities to have town meetings, it would be nice if we could use them at a minimal or no charge.
Want to bring that up to the park board?
Sure.
Okay.
But specifically for town-type meetings.
No.
Couple of things.
Yeah.
First of all, received a communication this afternoon from the police, a member of the police department wishing to thank the members of the Public Works Department Committee that I chair for their great help on Interstate 94 during the recent snowfall and the accident and car traffic situation. The police said basically we could not have done our jobs if it had not been for Public Works clearing the way with plows and other equipment. So a shout-out to Public Works from our, our police department for their help.
We also want to thank the fire department for the great job they did last night on a propane tanker that was leaking out on I-94 and I believe, Chief, maybe you can give the world a short summary, I think you guys did a fantastic job.
I just want to say, 15 years ago, I don't think things would have went as well as they did incorporating all the agencies involved when you figure you got the State Patrol, both Minnesota and Wisconsin State Patrol, St. Ray County Sheriff's Department, County Highway Department, the city Hudson Police Department, Hudson Public Works, Fire EMS Department. I don't think this coordination would have went on 15 years ago without some head button. So it was a great thing for me to see it all come together. Assistant Chief Bill Warner was actually the incident commander for the whole thing. I was sitting next to him as an assistant. It was great experience and exposure for him, you know, especially when you have somebody else to help you along. But basically what we had is that we had a traffic accident, in the process of the traffic accident, in, the traffic accident involved a pickup truck and a pro, and a 9,000-gallon propane tanker. In the process of the accident, broke off one of the valves on the propane tanker. So the propane tanker started to leak propane. It took a while to get everything coordinated, but everything went well. It wasn't leaking out at a high rate, but it was leaking, so...
Chief, you might, for the TV audience and, and the council, mention what we do and how we have organized the disaster team, which includes myself and everyone else. Just give us a little summary.
In the, in the process, early onset, we, the first unit that arrived establishes what we call a command and from that, that's the central where all the information is, comes back to and then that person or persons, depend upon discipline, is a group that makes decisions together. It's called Unified Command. And that worked really well in this particular incident, I expect it to, and any other, there's been a lot of, long, we've come a long way in, in trying to resolve these incidents together as a group.
But collectively, we all take courses on this so that when things like this happen and disasters happen, we know exactly what to do. And in this particular instance, the chief didn't call me and all of the other people that were energized to take over this particular problem with nobody arguing, arguing about who's in command because it's already established.
This particular tape material, it says small spill evacuated a half a mile, large spill one mile. So if you can think about what's involved or what's within a half a mile of the one and a half eastbound, of what would have had it been evacuated or cleared, I mean, that's for a small spill. We're talking motels, we're talking assisted living, we're talking senior housing. But if it had been a large spill, we're talking hospital, I mean, it could have been a big deal, but fortunately it was kept to a minimum.
Fantastic job, Chief, thank you very much.
One more, I request for an agenda item for our next meeting, the first week and in the first full week in February. And this goes under the heading of, that it's conceivable for reasonable people to disagree. I would like to put on the agenda, discussion by the council for a referendum on our spring election, April 3rd, on the matter of the picnic shelter at the end of the Dyke Road.
Anyone else? Any alterperson? City attorney?
As a segue to what you were talking about, I did put on the table, as you've been hopefully, Jan, put it out, the NIMS training, it says MIMS, but it should be NIMS.
Yeah.
That the elected officials are required to attend. Eric Christiansen is our original government director, I put his cell phone number in his office number, he can give you the details on who's required to be there, what's required, what the training sessions involve. But I just want to bring that up, so that was a good segue with what you were talking about before, that's, that's part of what is involved with this.